Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, in accordance with the open meeting law requirements, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over Lunenburg Public Access. We'll take roll call. Mr. Jeffries, Mr. Allison, and Mr. Bittner are here. Mr. Prokavu and Mr. Chenis are absent. Is there any public comment from the board? Is there any public comment from the public? All right, seeing none, we'll get to our first agenda item. It's an A&R plan for 155 and 167 Reservoir Road. If you could just give your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Ron Koivu from 45 Lawrence Street, Pepperell, Mass. for Harbor Classic Homes. What we have is, we had to move lot lines between 155 and 167 Reservoir Road to accommodate a foundation, but a little bit too close to the property line. We've put in all the documents, both parties agreed, so now we're here for the approval.
So basically, it's a land swap?
Yes.
Between the two?
Correct, yes.
Joining parcels? And this was identified by yourself or the building inspector?
Engineer.
The engineer? Did the building?
We've been in Bingham.
The building is permitted and has been inspected and occupancy is expected, but they don't meet the required offset. They're short four and some portion of an inch. And so until that's corrected, the building inspector can't issue occupancy because it doesn't need zoning. So this land swap gives the ability to meet the required offset. And the building to the north of it is well able to give up the foot or two that it is.
And Mr. Bernie, neither of these lots will be nonconforming?
No, they would not be. And it's a, even if they were both nonconforming to start, it's a dead even swap, so the swap wouldn't make one more nonconforming.
I want any questions?
No, Bernard.
All right, I accept the motion.
A move that we accept the A&R claim?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Just hold on, I'll be signing.
I think he wants to take this with him.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Do you want me to date it?
Yeah.
Today is the?
Yes, today is the 26th.
Alrighty, our next agenda item is a public hearing for 961 Northfield Road. I believe it's the release of the subdivision?
A request for rescission.
Request for rescission of a subdivision?
Do you need to read this?
Yep.
Yeah.
You can just go down if you wouldn't mind.
Pick it up down with the other end.
Town of Lunenburg Public Hearing. The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on February 26, 2018, 6:35 PM, Joseph Bellotta Meeting Room, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. to discuss a rescission of Blueberry Hill definitive subdivision, 961 Northfield Road, map 037, parcel 0009, under MGL Chapter 41, Section 81W. Owners applicants are David and John Saliba, 15 Maxwell Drive, Derry, New Hampshire. Materials are available for viewing at the planning office, 960 Mass. Ave., Lunenburg, Mass. 01462.
Good evening. My name is Neil Gorman from David E. Ross Associates, Inc., representing the landowners, David and John Saliba. And I know the board is familiar with this project, but I think there's a few butters here as well. Do you want me to go quickly through what we're doing here?
Sure.
Okay. Back in the late 1980s, 1989 in particular, a subdivision called Blueberry Hill was approved for the parcel of land at 961 Northfield Road. That parcel is known as Lot 1 on this plan here. And on this plan here for Northfield Road, it's at the top of the road, this is Lot 1, and there was this Blueberry Hill subdivision going on, proposed and approved back in 1989 by the planning board. That plan was then revised in 1991, and that was approved as well. The property, when it was originally proposed for that definitive subdivision, was under the ownership of the Maplewood Golf Course Trust. The Maplewood Golf Course Trust in 1995 sold the property to 1150 Hancock Street Trust. Actually, it was in December of 94. March of 95, 1150 Hancock Street Trust sold the property that we're discussing to Diversified Financial Solutions Southeast, Inc. And then the property was sold by Diversified Financial Southeast, Inc. to JB and MB Realty, Inc. in 1998. And none of these subdivisions, none of the subdivision at that time had been started or constructed. Then in 2003, the property was sold to John E. Saliba and David G. Saliba. They've owned it since. Now, the owners, the Saliba brothers, have since created two new lots, which were on an A&R plan that the board approved back in last fall or early winter of 2017, creating two new lots up in this upper corner of this property, right next to, this is the golf course, they're right up in this corner of the property. And it was during that time when they were selling those properties that the buyer's attorneys discovered that the subdivision was still on the books and recorded with the Registry of Deeds, and that they wanted to make sure that everything was cleared up, and a release was requested. The board issued that release a couple weeks ago. And now we're here before you to ask to rescind the subdivision. There's no intentions of building this subdivision as previously approved. All the permits with the Conservation Commission have since expired. We had all of those properly removed from the Conservation Commission in the last couple months. So we're going through the official channels as recommended by the board to have this subdivision rescinded, so that all the property is cleared and those two parcels or two lots that were recently created could be sold.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does the board have any questions or comments at this time?
Nope.
Is there any questions or comments from the public?
Yeah, my name is?
Excuse me, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium and just identifying yourself, please.
Hi. My name is Steve Kenny. I own 110 Old Farm Road, which is on the other side. And I understand the rescission and the lots don't affect them on the other side, but someone's been on the property the last few weeks tagging all the trees, you know, and I've been, you know, I've conferred with Ron Smith, who I bought the property from, who developed that subdivision. And he tells me that there's a plan that goes back decades that shows a 50-foot non-build that runs 900 feet down that wall. So I'm here to, you know, albeit that this does not affect me on that side, I'm concerned on, you know, why are we tagging lot lines and tagging trees, you know, and if that, you know, that 50-foot build, you know, non-build does exist, which I'm told it does, and I'm told he's seen plans that goes back decades, the previous planning heads, you know, there should be, there should be some, some ruling from the board about going in there and disturbing the trees, meaning if they're going to go in to log it, you know, or anything else. There should be nothing going on on that 50-foot strip 900 feet down that wall, or the demising wall between that property and the corner of the property.
There was a proposal for a subdivision on this property that goes back to the early lots, and that was for 65 or so. And that had, that was, it was under the Cluster Development Bylaw, and there was a 50-foot strip around. That proposal was withdrawn, so that, that's...
I was told it still exists, but that, I mean, I'd like to see plans that show that it doesn't, but...
It's been since I've been here, and I know it's referred to in some of the minutes about that 50-foot strip.
So, and I'm looking at the subdivision from here, and it looks as though there may be a buffer as part of the subdivision from Blueberry Hill.
Yep.
It would be a matter of looking at the approval documents and seeing what they say.
Yeah.
Usually, that kind of strip is associated with the development of the plan as it's approved.
I'm told it had something to do with conservation land turned over to the town. It goes back before the, I'm told it goes back...
Goes back before the subdivision?
Before the subdivision was filed. If that's the case, I just would like to have that...
I was gonna say, if that's the case, then, then that, yeah, then that's separate, yeah.
Because I'm a little concerned that, that I've got, you know, surveyors on my lawn tagging trees.
Well...
Well, it's easy access, I'm not too, but they're tagging, they've got, they've got red flags going all the way down to 900 feet.
Surveyors, though, out doing survey is different than...
I can step in and...
Yeah, sure. If you have some of the answers.
Okay. We have done some soil testing up in the back corner of the property, which I believe is what Mr. Kenny is bringing to our attention, up in this area.
Okay.
And our surveyors from our firm have been on the property, just doing a topography. I have hung some ribbons on trees. They're not marked to be cut, they're just symboling where we dug test holes.
Okay.
And...
Along that wall, correct?
And if there are, if flags along the wall, they may be just demarcating where they found drill holes or property line monuments. They're not marking anything else other than found monumentation along the property. There's nothing proposed there at the moment. We're just doing reconnaissance work for our client. Anything that we do out there would have to come before the board for approval, both with the planning board and/or the Conservation Commission and/or the Board of Health.
No, I understand that. I'm just, I'm just worried about...
Sure, and this...
Coming in and logging, logging the property.
Have trees been cut so far?
Huh?
Have trees been cut so far?
No, but it was logged previously, so the trees have now become mature again. I think it was logged, you know, I mean, they're, but there's...
I can speak right now that we were just out there doing soil testing, and that's why we hung ribbons around the trees.
I'm just concerned now with that 50-foot strip to make sure that gets maintained, so there's no, there's no trees being...
Yeah, we'll, we'll look into what that 50-foot strip is, if it exists, and under what authority. Now...
I don't have a problem with this at all.
Sure.
So that's, that doesn't affect me, I have no problem with the rescission of the two lots, it's just that, that now added, that just kind of brought this to the forefront. I've only owned the property a year and a half.
Sure.
I'm through with the process here, but...
The caveat to all that with logging is, logging is not a local permit. It's a state permit through Department of Conservation and Recreation. So if they meet those regulations, then...
That's clearly wetlands there, I mean, it's...
And there, there is some permissible activity within wetlands associated with logging through that DCR process. I don't know all the fine details of it, but if there's a 50-foot strip that's protected, that's something that we would communicate with?
Given to the town as part of whatever land swaps were back there. That's...
Okay, and again, I, I'm not, I don't have the answer, so I'm not going to say definitively one way or the other, but it's something we'll, we'll look into.
Will you mind giving me your name one more time?
Steve Kenny.
Steve. So your concern, just so I'm clear?
Yep.
Is that you live in this area, they've been tagging it recently, and you're...
I live on the, yeah, there's a wall that demises the two properties.
Correct. And so you live on the other side of that?
Yeah, so tagged, trees are tagged all the way back here.
Okay.
Out of nowhere, which has nothing to do with rescinding a subdivision permit, right? So, so it just, it just, you know, no, I, I, but you've got to understand, I mean, that's my concern.
Sir, if you could just address the board with your comments.
Sorry. It seems as though you're, what you're concerned about, if, see if I'm correct on this, is that something's going to happen, or they're, maybe they're looking into doing some kind of development or some kind of work, or something in this area.
Something is going to, some event is going to happen to the, to that wooded area there.
Right.
So I went back to the person that I bought the property from, and who had developed the subdivision, and asked him what he knew about, you know, that demising wall, and he's the one that told me this plan exists.
In the event that something is proposed in this area, you will be notified, so you will get a certified letter from the associates, and they'll let you know.
You know what happens sometimes, it's the mea culpa, and all the trees are gone. I mean, you know, but I just, I just wanted a note for the board that, to put some emphasis on, nothing should happen in that area until we determine if it's an area. And I'm told it is, so that's my concern.
So we can formally request to look in to see if there is some sort of conservation restriction or town...
We can see what we have in the records and if anything's recorded.
Would the rescission of this subdivision or the, have any effect on that? I mean, if it's, if it was part of...
If it predates the subdivision, no, it shouldn't.
If it was part of their application and it's rescinded, then it goes away with their rescission.
Correct.
But if there is a determination from conservation or a town entity that puts that buffer in place, that rescinding this would not affect that, that would still be in place?
Correct, and I believe Mr. Kenny said it predates the subdivision.
I'm told it predates the subdivision.
So if it predates the subdivision, then it, it, the rescission shouldn't affect it in any way.
Right. Okay, I also butted property that was just recently logged, and they do have a public hearings through the Conservation Commission. The state DCR rep, Mike Downey, goes to these meetings, and he's very open to questions. They do have to delineate, they put three blue dots on the borderline, and if you feel they're within 20 feet of your property line, then you have the right to call it, and they will...
If there was a DCR hearing?
Pardon me? Yep, through the Conservation Commission, you'll get a, you'll, just before they get the logging permit, you'll get a, a green tag, I believe, in the mail from Conservation.
So just to clarify, what would, what would the difference be if it was after this subdivision?
If it were part of the subdivision?
If it was after, or part of?
Well, so if it were before the subdivision, it would be some instrument that reserved it. If it came after the subdivision and wasn't associated, we would infer that it's, again, some instrument outside of subdivision control. If it were part of the plan that set aside a 50-foot buffer strip similar to an open space parcel in a cluster development, then the rescission of this would just make this one large parcel. And any development going forward would be subject to whatever permits are required for the proposal through this board.
I was just curious, because this is a subdivision that they're rescinding, and since then, there has been another one proposed on this property.
Correct.
So...
Yeah, I haven't got notice on that one yet.
Okay, well, that was, that's...
It was withdrawn prior to...
Okay.
I think before you, you even moved in.
Okay. So there's no current subdivision after this?
There's nothing proposed on this parcel that we have any, any information on.
But it would probably be reasonable to assume that anything is possible on this land.
You are a direct butter, so by law, you will be notified if there is a public hearing for a subdivision of the property.
Sure.
Thank you. So, yeah, we'll formally contact the Conscom, and if it's something through them, then it should be honored, and you can also, Matt Morrow from the Conservation Commission...
Thanks, but thanks for your time looking into it.
All right, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Mr. Kenny, did you put your, either your phone number or email on the sign sheet, that way we could get in touch with you?
Thank you, Marjorie.
Do you have any more comments?
None.
More questions or comments from the board?
No.
Should we take action tonight, or should we?
That's up to you guys. I mean, there's nothing that prevents you from taking action. You have established that this is what you would, the applicant, do if you want to wait for the information for the 50-foot buffer. I don't think there's an issue with taking action at your next meeting.
Is that going to hold you guys up?
I mean, they're excited to get this wrapped up sooner than later. I mean, these plans, they can give you the plans here, but there's no mention of a, there's mention of proposed open space as part of that subdivision. There's no known comment on those plans of that 50-foot buffer zone along that property line for that generation of plan in the 90s, so...
And I do know the Highfield Village proposal that was going on for all those years did have 50 feet along the eastern property line.
I don't think they had reached the point of clarifying whether that was going to be given to the town, if that was going to go with the homeowners.
I, I agree, but I also think it's, it would be easy for someone to infer that that was, you know...
True enough.
Either had existed or would exist. When you see the plan enough, you can start to... So I'll, I'll look into it, and, you know, again, it's, it's up to you.
Yeah, I guess I'd want to know if the, because, I mean, that was withdrawn, the Highfield Village was withdrawn less than three years ago, correct?
Correct.
So the Conscom's order of conditions would still be binding, unless it was rescinded through them?
But their order of conditions, I can't say it wouldn't have, but in general, orders of conditions don't mandate a set aside of buffered area. They more shape the manner in which you perform the construction. Your silt fence goes here, you can only do this much clearing at a time, you can only move this much earth, replication goes this way. So any buffer would usually be part of the subdivision process or some other process.
Yeah, I mean, what I see, we asked them to do this, they did what we asked. We can't really hold them accountable for someone else's application or theirs from however long ago, if there was a binding agreement with the town, for some reason, that should be honored, and I think we've taken steps to ensure that.
Mr. Chair, what's the, what's the vote threshold for this? Three?
Correct.
And what would happen if it wasn't, it would just remain in place for perpetuity, or would we...
Yep, it would continue to be a subdivision that someone could potentially come in and develop.
Not anymore, because there's been pieces of...
Well, yes, that...
They would formally have to go through the whole application process again.
It seems that you're just clearing up the land, basically, to get it prepared for, I mean, at the point that Mr. Saliba's, you know, hired a engineering company, I mean, right, a reasonable person would assume that there are some, there's a need for engineering.
Correct, yeah, we created two new lots right in this area.
Yeah.
Which is part of where one of the Blueberry Hill roads was supposed to go through. And of course, the buyers of those lots noticed that those plans were still on the record and wanted to make sure that they didn't build a house there, and then next thing you know, there's a road going through there.
Just...
So, I mean, these plans are pretty much, I mean, from the 90s have expired anyways, they were, you know, unapproved.
I mean, there's a special permit associated with that approved subdivision.
The release of the covenant allowed them to sell off those two parcels, and in essence, release the rest of the property, being subdivided and sold off as...
So just trying to clean up the old, previous owner's plans, because the golf course was going to re-modify a whole bunch of things out there, but then they sold off a bunch of pieces in different directions, so this wouldn't happen anymore. So, and again...
And if it does come out that there is, there is an existing buffer, then that could be enforced by Conservation after, after we've done this, right?
It, I mean, I guess...
If that's who...
It all depends on what the, what the buffer is, how it was written, how it's recorded, how it's enforced. What I'll say is, in the years of looking at this property through the Highfield Project, and, and when David E. Ross Associates came in about, about this issue, there's nothing that shows up on our GIS map indicating any sort of easement or other permanent type restriction that you would expect to see if something were recorded in a way that showed it in a long term. That doesn't mean that it isn't out there somewhere, but it's nothing that jumps off the page at you, it's, oh, hey, wait, there's this thing there. We have a, a number, I dealt with a gentleman today who came in, and he owns, he thought he owned three parcels, he owns two parcels and an undeveloped private road. And it's very evident that it's an undeveloped private road by the way that it's depicted on the map and looking at it in, in the registry. So not having that initial evidence makes me question what, what vehicle created it and how it's out there, but it doesn't mean that it's not there.
The initial Highfield Village plan, the dimensional variation was denied by the ZBA, and then they had withdrawn from the planning board. So that application is basically null and void, and then my only question was, is if they received the determination from the Conscom, then they would have an agreement through them somehow.
Yeah, I'm, I'm inclined to go, to go with what you had said previous, that they followed through with what we've asked.
Mr. Chair, a move that we rescind the Blueberry Hill definitive subdivision as requested.
Second. Yeah, close the hearing first.
Oh, accept the motion to close a public hearing, please. Actually, there's no more questions or comments from the public before we close it. Accept the motion to close a public hearing?
So move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I would accept another motion to...
Mr. Chair, a move that we rescind the Blueberry Hill definitive subdivision.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for tuning in.
Thanks for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, our next appointment is the Lunenburg Water District, 496 Massachusetts Avenue, request for a de minimis change. Is there anyone here regarding that?
There is not. I spoke with them, and it's really a very, very minor change, but I felt that it was appropriate for the board to see it and sort of bless it. So in your packet, you have this nice eight and a half by, or 11 by 17 sheet with all the red notes on it. So the, the two things that are really changing for the purposes of the way that the lot functions is the transformer location is moving from the west side of the entrance drive to the west side of the building off of the parking lot. That was after discussions with Unitil and a need for a more, a less conspicuous and traffic location for snow clearing and the like. And a light pole was added in a, in a similar area on the northwest side of the parking area and towards the front of the building. They're hundreds of feet from the street, so, and from their, their closest neighbors through the woods, so the light pole is going to be similar to the other ones, it's a down-facing LED, shouldn't be an issue. The utility connection is coming at a more straight shot from the, the street due to where they're entering the building. They didn't want to have to turn 90 degrees, pulling the wire through conduit and have to put a manhole in. Again, cross-country on their own property. And then the last, they relocated their water connections, and within the building envelope on the apron to the west side, they shuffled some equipment around. So the generator is in a different place than the propane storage, they kind of picked them up and flipped them back and forth, doesn't affect the footprint, doesn't affect what equipment was out there, but they did move them, so it will be slightly different than what was on the approved plan. And they added a heat pump to make the building function a little bit more efficiently.
So anyone have any questions or comments on the changes?
Can you just go back over where the transformer went?
So the transformer was originally on the west side of the entrance driveway.
Yep.
And then if you go to the topmost red box on the paper...
Okay.
...that you have, the transformer is now on the west side of the building at the toe of the slope.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Allison, do you have any questions or concerns?
Nothing jumps out at me. It's not uncommon for, for this kind of a shuffle, once they get actual digging and land stuff out.
They started talking to contractors and...
Right.
All right, I'll accept the motion to accept the de minimis changes as presented.
I move that we accept de minimis changes as presented.
Second. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Very good. Thank you, Water Department.
Our next appointment is Mr. Al Wernick, request for alterations to the Village Center District sign provision. Good if you would identify yourself.
Alan Wernick, forty-eight Holden Road, Shirley, Mass. Honestly, I've never been before to the planning board before, so I'm not really, you know, how to present this or what I'm supposed to do. Do you guys have questions for me or do you want to know basically my view on the topic?
Yeah, if you could just tell us why you're here.
We moved into Bad Larry's two years ago. Prior to us moving into the location at the village in the historic district, there was an existing convenience store that had been there for years and years and years that had lit signage in the windows. So when we moved in, we didn't, I didn't follow the signage rules. I mean, then if, not that I didn't follow them, I didn't look into them. I just assumed that everything was okay. We put neon lights in the windows. They've been there for two years and then it was brought to our attention recently that we're not allowed to have any type of lit signs in the windows. So we had to turn them off. The reason I'm here is because I, it hurts business, number one, especially when it's dark out. If you look at the winter time, it gets dark at four o'clock at night and people basically drive past us. Right now, we currently, with the exception of the sign on the building and the flags, which you can't see at night unless we put exterior lighting to illuminate them, you really can't tell we're any different than the old post office that was there. Which I've already, we have had people tell us that they think we're closed and it does, they just drive by. I mean, you're coming through the lights, people are paying more attention to whether the light's red and green. So we need something that will bring attention to our establishment. Basically, that's, that's where we're at. As far as that goes, I'm not asking for a lot, but you know, even something as simple as a open sign and maybe, I was thinking, this is my thought, I was thinking maybe like three illuminated signs in the windows for, per establishment. I'm not talking just for me. I'm speaking as well for Dragonfly Cafe, who you can't tell if they exist or not, okay? I'm also talking about the new convenience store. They just, they, gentleman just bought the place and now he can't have any signs that says he's open. And when you drive by, also it looks like it's this big white lit, I don't know what, you know? And it's hard. It's hard to be in the center of town. I went to a couple of these meetings that they were talking about, you know, what we'd like to see in, for Lunenburg, you know, business. And this isn't what I envisioned and I'm not sure how this all of a sudden became an issue, you know, an issue of this magnitude where I know that somebody had made a comment on the discussing Lunenburg site about how they didn't like the neon signs in the center of town and how it was just detracting from the beauty of the historic district. And I don't know how dramatic we can get here, but I mean, if we want to go back to the, our forefathers, I'm sure that they didn't want a library there. And I'm sure there's a lot of things that have happened in the historic center that, you know, as progress came about, people, you know, they discussed it and they adapted to it. It's a modern time. We need some sort of illuminated lighting. I mean, if you wanted to go back to the old days, they would have a gas lantern with a big bulb on top that said bar on it. You'd stick it in the window and people would see that. So it's not unusual historically to have a lit sign in an establishment of this, of this nature or any nature to bring attention to it, especially when it's dark. Unfortunately, again, ordinance has since times changed and we're not allowed to have flames in the building. So we can't have obviously a lit candle with a bar sign in it. So we're just, we're just asking the board to consider looking at this and bringing us up to a little bit of times. I don't like to point out other, and I'm, it's not bad behavior, but other, other things. You have a scrolling sign at the high school, which is within the visual, whatever, site of the downtown area. And if someone said to me, the reason that they didn't want neon signs, it was a distraction. And I find that something like that is far more distracting as you're driving by while you're trying to read it than a simple open sign that says, we're here and we're open. So, you know, we're just asking the town, the planning board, to consider this from our point of view as a business person who's trying to maintain business. It's hard enough and seriously, and you can ask anybody within the complex. It's, it's hard enough to get people to stop to come in there without putting yet more roadblocks in our way to bring the business in. You know, we, we have bills to pay too and we have things that we have to do. And it's getting harder and harder to do this with everything that keeps, keeps occurring. And this is, this is just one issue of many that is, that is becoming, you know, it's starting to stack up with our business. You know, but we're not here to talk about anything but the neon signs at this point in time. So that's what I'd like to discuss and hopefully, I know that you had this on your agenda. I believe I read it something for a little bit later. So I guess that's my whole stance in a nutshell, a big nutshell, but a nutshell, you know. Questions?
I'm curious as to what Mr. Allison has to say.
I was part of writing this bylaw. I do remember the discussion about the barber pole. I do not remember a discussion about neon. I don't disagree with, with anything that you've stated. Not entirely sure what we can do about this. And there is no relief from something like this from ZBA. Is that correct?
You know, I think it's probably something we'd have to discuss with the building commissioner. I believe it would be a variance. And I, I don't know that it would even hit the variance test because it's not. Well, I mean, it is, it is a variance. I just don't know what hardship you could prove for a sign variance.
It does call out neon specifically in the Village Center District under design standards C four. It says neon flashing signs, moving signs, electric message signs and roof signs shall not be used except for barber poles.
So how come you had a different reference than I'm looking at?
Yeah, I'm looking at three C, three D.
I'm looking at three, three D.
You're looking at the.
Oh, this is the new draft. Okay, sorry.
That's not the accurate number.
But yeah, that was, that was what we're reading.
That's the proper wording.
It's the proper, yeah.
I'm looking at the re.
As I recall the discussion and, you know, this was, I came into this probably sixteen months into the, the whole VCD process. The prohibition on those signs revolved around the existing fabric of downtown or the Village Center being majority residential. And the fact that the bylaw was allowing for an expansion of uses that would move beyond the two-way corridor. And the introduction of a plethora of those type of signs over the, the development of the district would change the character of that area and would become impactful on not only the historic nature, but the comfort of those who continue to reside there and would have a negative effect on people who preceded the village district and wanted to continue to reside in, in the property that they purchased. Now, the reality of that, I, you know, that's, that's my recollection of, of why that specific sign provision was installed.
When was the Village Center District voted in?
May of two thousand fifteen.
So this is a relatively new district and town. And, and the Board of Selectmen recently just passed with the Architectural Preservation District a, a set of rules that really fine tuned what all this actually means within the very small village district. So down to, you know, for the residents, the results of this bylaw, I think, have a very restricted product on what they're allowed to do that forces homes. I don't know if I want to use the word forces, but that requires homes within the village district area to adhere to this preserved type look. So having said that, I think that, you know, a neon flashing sign, I'm not a fan of neon signs, period. But I think that what, there's two sides how I'm looking at this. I think what would help you would be, let me step back. I don't think it's reasonable in the, in the center of town, in this district, for the residents who live here to have to see a big neon sign that says, girls, girls, girls. And I've brought this up several times and we can't regulate content. So there's nothing that we really can do that's going to stop someone from having a big neon sign that says, girls, 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 unless we say across the board, no neon signs. So, I'm sorry, if I can just help you out. So I personally favor not having neon signs in, in Lunenburg, period. Because I think that we don't need to go into that road. This is a residential neighborhood, for the most part, residential community. And that I think we need to keep it a residence. And that means that when people come home, they shouldn't have to see big neon signs on their way in of whatever other people's, you know, thoughts should be. However, you're talking about an open sign in a window that to me seems really critical when you're coming through the center of town to know if businesses are open. So what I would be in favor of is that we make an adjustment on three D to say that we do not allow neon signs, outdoor neon signs, et cetera, et cetera. But that we make a business exception to say that businesses are permitted to have a neon sign so long as it doesn't flash or neon type material in a window. But if we were to do something like that, I think that that would do two things. It would protect the residents from the general concern about having neon signs. And the second thing is it would help you out as a business owner, that if somebody's driving by, that they can see that quick open sign. Because I, for one, I've gone right past the center of town on my way to the highway to go to somewhere else because I wasn't sure if Hadwin Market over here was open. And they were, but they didn't have the neon sign that I've come to get used to, right? And all the people who don't follow discussing Lunenburg and didn't see the post that was up there about this, how do they know that the businesses in town are open? So I would support that we make an exception to this, that we would promote one simply for businesses in this district.
And what I'm, what I'm requesting is, I appreciate the open sign, but I was, what I was requesting was just a little bit more, not a lot. And first off, you guys can regulate, you regulate the size of the signs we put on the building. You generally, you know, could almost regulate content if it was distasteful. I mean, you can't, so, so I could have put on a naked woman on my sign?
Yes.
I wish I thought of that. I would have, never mind. Anyways, no, in seriousness, I didn't know that you couldn't do the content that, of the sign. But you could regulate the size of the neon. You could say, well, we're only going to allow, you know, a one foot by two foot neon in any window. I would like to see a couple, at least something in my establishments is what I'd like to see, something I could put in, even if it said burgers and something that even said dinner or anything, just like, and let's put me aside, let's forget about me for a second. I'm just going to talk about Hadwin Market, which is now Island Farms, okay? Something that simply said lottery and coffee for the Dragonfly Cafe, something that simply said coffee and smoothies. Not, not a lot of signs, maybe a couple, you know, smaller signs, something that when it's dark out. And I'm more concerned, you can't see my, my signs during the daytime. So it's during the day, it's, to me, it's a non-issue. It's when it starts to get the dust to dark, when people actually, you know, I can be drawn visually to look at your, your building. Because during the daytime, the flag's fine. It's an open flag. It hangs there. You can see it's open. At nighttime, you can't see that open flag unless, like I said, unless I put an illuminated, a light, a light illuminating that. So I'm just trying to figure out what would be equitable for, right now, the three businesses that are there. I don't know down the line, how far the businesses are going to expand and where they're going to go and what's going to happen in the future as far as things are going. And I can appreciate the planning board's concern about then and now, you know, in the future. Unfortunately, I have to pay my bills today and I have, you know, and my customers got used to seeing this for two years. So it's not like something that hasn't been, if they said right off the bat, no neon signs, this isn't happening. My customers would have gotten used to us being open like that visually. As Mr. Jeffries had said, he passed Hadwin Market because you become basically muscle memory, in this case, optical memory, looking at a place and if the light's not on, you know, you would just make a natural assumption that it's closed. And it's, it's something that I, I believe that we might, hopefully, the planning board can discuss and reconsider. You know, if nothing else, an open sign's great. Maybe not a neon sign. Maybe we could have a different kind of lighted sign in the window and something maybe not as blaring. Because it said no lighted signs, I believe.
Correct.
So maybe we can make an exception for a different kind of lighted sign, you know?
You can have a sign that has an internal light on it.
No, no, it has to be externally lit from the front. Lighting shall be provided using a gooseneck fixture. Backlighting of signs shall not be used. That's C.
So, just so I'm clear on this, because my reading of this, and maybe I'm wrong, is it seemed to be that if you have a sign inside of your window, that you can put a light onto that sign from inside of your window. Am I reading this correctly? And that that could be visible from people passing by?
Right, you could put it on the outside of your building and just have a gooseneck sign that says it.
Got it. What I'm, what I'd be concerned about, Mr. Wernick, is I think that we are, we've designated this part of town to be historic. And I understand that you have a business, you know, but we have designated this, this part of town to be historic. So while, you know, the residents want to put in, you know, vinyl windows to get, you know, more energy efficiency, they have to go before the APD, get approval for that because in this district, it has to be wood. And the same thing with siding for their homes, that they can't just put up vinyl siding, that they have to spend that extra expense on wood. So I'm, I'd be a little cautious about the rest of the signage that you'd be interested in. Because I think that it, it loses the balance of, what's the point of having a historic district and designating it if the businesses are excluded and it only applies to the residents? So how do we find that middle ground?
And my other concern is, as we talk a lot about home businesses and things of that nature, it's, I mean, you could potentially have dozens of neon signs in the center of town. As a resident, I think that the Village Center District and the APDC guidelines are somewhat restrictive. But as a planning board member, I have to accept the bylaws voted by the town as the will of the people. You do have the ability to petition as a resident or.
So what would his remedy be?
He could find a resident to.
Sponsor.
Sponsor the petition. I believe for annual town meeting, it's ten registered voters' signature for the amendment.
And all the wording would have to be complete prior to.
The wording needs to be on the petition.
And when's, what's the deadline, the twenty seven?
March twenty second.
Twenty second, okay.
So that's a Thursday and I believe it's four P M.
That gives you a month. I mean, are we, are we movable on this? I mean, what do you think, Mr. Allison?
We can't do anything on this without going to town meeting.
Correct. But are you interested in adjusting any language?
I think what Mr. Wernick is here to do is, is request that the board propose an amendment. And if the board is not amendable, I believe he would then be subjected to pursuing the citizen petition in some manner.
Well, this was all vetted out by, by public hearings. And, I mean, granted, the town meeting is a public hearing, but. I'm torn. I can see both sides. I mean, if you don't, if, if you can't advertise, then you're going to lose business. And if you're going to lose business, then why would you be there?
Well, he can advertise. He just can't do it through internally lit or neon signs.
You have alternatives, but they're just not, they're not, they're not the same. They're not neon.
I completely understand what you're saying, but again, this is fairly new bylaw that's been voted in. And I mean, I, I had several things I would have liked to amend in it, but I decided against it just because it was just recently voted in. I mean, it's some of the wording and things of that nature. It is on the table for us. It's been on the table since we introduced the use table and definitions. But I personally probably would not be in favor of amending it at this time.
I'm wondering if we could maybe have some kind of a special permit or a max number in the district or, I don't know, is that a possibility?
I don't think you want to get into.
First come, first served where you begin to.
Get into that and that's just, I mean, the special permit is what you, what town meeting floor amended the freestanding signs to be. There was concern about the inability to have a freestanding sign and. There was concern about the inability to have a freestanding sign, and Kathy Clark stood up and, you know, proposed, or, uh, maybe it wasn't her, but I know I had spoken with her about it, about amending it to include freestanding signs, and the compromise ended up being that they're by special permit.
I think we have some, uh, public comment.
Robert Ebersold, 94 Main Street, speaking as myself and a little bit of a historian. Uh, but I also disclose, I live in the, the district, so I'm affected by anything that might get changed. Uh, part of the discussion with the center is that the village, uh, complex is in an area of the district that used to be commercial. So when the town went to the village district bylaw, they eliminated the commercial district, which included the old gas station, so we can't have another gas station back here, and that was a conscious decision by the town to do that. But then they expanded the entire district, and part of the discussion becomes, do you have a district within a district? Does it feel different that the village is different than something that may happen down each of the different spines of the district? That may be something to think about. We did lots of charrettes and discussions about what we wanted to do, and it was, let businesses do anything, let nobody do anything. And they came into the middle, and that's why we had some of the restrictions. So I'd suggest that maybe there be an opportunity to have another meeting, um, where you reach out to the, uh, Architectural Preservation District Committee, see their opinions. Some of the discussion, I go, go back to the concept of neon signs and flashing signs has been an issue in town regardless of where it is in town. Uh, at the same time, the need for communication, I certainly understand that. And then the question becomes, when is one too many, too many? Um, we also have this situation going on, we have a different enforcement process going on now versus the past, and that's what, part of the reason why it's up at this point. So, um, historically, it's changed for what, how people feel about the village complex itself, but we do have to think about what happens as everybody turns their house into a business, and not just whether it's residential or not, do we want those businesses to have that different standard? So, I think there needs to be more discussion going on on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. One way we could limit the number is to, um, allow them for, uh, retail liquor, liquor license holders. I mean, because it is a very commonly associated thing with, you know, a drinking establishment has a neon sign. I'm just throwing that out there.
I see your point, but also, like, with the Dragonfly Cafe, why shouldn't, I mean...
I understand.
I understand the limitations of the sign bylaw, um, and there's, and when they created the district, it's not like an overlay where they can't use the underlying, um, zoning. And then, is the size of a sign something they could seek a dimensional variation through the CBA?
I don't see why not, but, again, I'd want to see clarification on that.
Right.
What I would...
And again, that is a special permit, sorry.
I think, I think, to the residents, to the residents' point, I think I'm more than happy to have more discussion, I just don't think, prior to this town meeting, we're going to have the ability for that. Um, and again, you have the ability to solicit a resident to sponsor a citizen petition and, and speak your piece at town meeting, um, and I'm happy to solicit the input of the APDC or, and the residents, uh, regarding that. And even, I think, if you do petition at town meeting, that, that would give the opportunity to hear from a lot of residents on the subject as well. So even if it doesn't pass, you still have the opportunity at the next, we have basically two town meetings every year, and I understand, it's just kind of the timing at this point, we don't have enough time to, but...
Well, would Mr. Warnock be able to go to town meeting? Is there, like, audience, I'm not...
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
I mean, town meeting is an open, public meeting.
Someone, I think, we need to be sponsored.
Yeah, someone from, from...
Just someone to speak.
A registered voter would have to recognize him to speak.
Segregated up in the front.
Wouldn't be able to vote, is basically the...
That's fine.
So what I, what I would advise to you, because if, what I just heard from the resident who, um, just spoke, uh, what one, what I heard within that is that, you know, which I already know, is that this was a lengthy process to get to this point, and that there were a lot of public hearings when the planning board, I know, kind of drafted the initial writing here, then I know that the Architectural Preservation Committee, I'm not sure if they're a committee or not.
There's two bylaws, there's the Architectural Preservation District and the Village Center District.
Okay.
And the, the Architectural Preservation District creates the Architectural Preservation District Committee, and they drafted guidelines and regulations in response to the APD.
Got it. So somehow, within all this stuff, I think that there's a lot of, um, there's been a lot of discussion on this, so I think that there would be some resistance to eliminating this language in its entirety. But I think that what would reasonably pass, in my own opinion, is if you were to add on to this language when it says, "Except for barber pulls," um, "Except for barber pulls" and a one-by-two-foot open sign. To me, that, that, I think most people could get behind that, um, you know, one-by-two open sign in a business window, I think most people could get behind that. I think once we get into eliminating a lot of this verbiage, then I think people are going to push back a little bit.
Okay, uh...
But it sounds as if that's not going to come from us.
No, that's, that's fine, that's why I came in tonight, because I basically knew that you guys were, had this on the agenda to talk about, and something that might have come to fruition before the town meeting, so I didn't have to go and sponsor a bill or sponsor a, whatever that is.
Citizen's petition.
Citizen's petition, and, you know, go through all the rigmarole of that, I was hoping that, you know, we could just, you guys could do all that for me, and then, uh, you know, by, by taking it, because if I understood it right, you, you would still have to take it, even if you decided, you would still have to put it on the warrant, and you would still have to take it to Town Hall for the discussion as well. So whether I did it or you did it, I was just figuring that, you know, it would just save me the step. If you, if the board thought that it was a feasible thing, if the board does not think it's a feasible thing, which I will revisit this after, you know, in a, a week or two, and find out exactly what the outcome of this is, unless you guys vote now on it and I know immediately, you know, then, you know, I'll know whether or not I'm going to town warrant, or if I'm just going to let it lie.
What do you guys think, I mean, Mr. Allison, Mr. Bittner, what do you think about adding in that exception, I noticed, except for barber pulls and a one-by-two open sign?
Honestly, from a planning board member's standpoint, I don't think us sponsoring it without even hearing from the other two members who aren't present this time, um...
Is this something that we should take up this month?
I wouldn't suggest it for this annual town meeting.
If it gets into the warrant, then it'll come before us.
If it get, yes, if there's a citizen petition, there needs to be a public hearing for zoning bylaw change anyway, so you'll have your bite at the apple.
And then we could say we, we, we recommend...
Recommend, yeah.
Right, 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 so we could vote on a recommendation.
Right.
And then the residents, if there's anything at town meeting, would vote it in our own.
So if you did get the petition on the warrant, then you would get a recommendation or a recommendation for or against from this board?
Okay.
Because there would be a public hearing on it.
And we are missing two members tonight, as was pointed out. So it is a little, um, you know, we're a little restricted in making, I think we should be a little restricted in making a decision. Overwhelmingly for us, I mean, I do support what you're trying to do. If it was worded similar to what I suggested, then I certainly would endorse that.
Well, change is change, however slow or long it takes, you know, we can only move forward, and that, that's why I came here today, find out where we stand and how we need to proceed, you know? Um, so what I'll do is, at this point in time, is we'll move forward and go try to get something on the warrant, and, you know, we'll see how that, how it fares. I thank you, gentlemen, for your time and listening, and for any advice, et cetera, and have a great night.
Um, just for your information, you'd get one of the petitions from the town clerk?
Already have it.
Okay.
I picked it up the, the first day when all this came to fruition, because I said, "If A doesn't happen, I want to be ready for B," and I had to get a sponsor, so it's just a matter of, I was just hoping to avoid, I, I just don't want to feel like I'm the villain, you know, coming in here and trying to change and bring, you know, blaring neon lights to the center of Lunenburg, when realistically, all we're trying to do is just a couple tasteful, you know? I mean, I've always tried to adhere to what the town wants, so I'm going to continue to do what you guys want us to do.
Hopefully you don't feel we're discouraging you in any ways, I appreciate you exercising your rights, it's just that I don't feel that we're ready to sponsor something of that nature right now.
Well, the board has to do what you, you guys, your job is different. My job is to proliferate my business and try to bring people in, and your job is to make sure that the town is run the way that, for the populace. I, I get it, I'm not against that part of it, you know, I'm just going to fight it the best I can, you know, and hopefully we'll get a small change. Even a small change is change, you know? And we'll work forward from there, and if not, then not, then we figure out an alternative route to attract people, you know? Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is minutes approval from February 12th, 2018. Everybody get a chance to look at those?
Yes, I did.
Are there any edits?
Not for me.
No edits.
Next are the public hearing from February 12th, 2018.
Not for me.
All right.
Nope, we're good.
All righty, uh, moving on to committee reports, capital planning.
Uh, capital planning is done for the year.
Did it go well?
I suppose so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we, uh, I feel that we did pretty good. Um, we funded most of the requests and, um, continued supporting, uh, an additional fund to get large ticket items for the fire department.
All right, Stormwater Task Force?
We have not met since last meeting.
Um, Agricultural Commission?
I was not able to attend.
I was able to attend, um, they did slightly modify their application, some of the wording. Um, there was a lot of discussion around the Cultural Council seeking input for an arts festival coming up, and as to how to solicit vendors and things of that nature. Um, there was very brief discussion on the town meeting warrant articles, and then there was also a resident sought input on, from the AgCom regarding 300 Holman Street. MJTC, MRPC, and Open Space, I think, are Ken and Dave.
Um, MR, MJTC, the last meeting was on Valentine's Day, and Ken should have that report, I think he said he was going to make it to that. And the MRPC, our next meeting is this Thursday.
Okay. Um, Charter Review Committee?
Charter Review Committee, we have not met since our last meeting here, but we do have a meeting for this Wednesday. And, um, great agenda, so there should be some votes coming out of the Charter Review Committee this week, exciting. Um, and I encourage anyone from the public to attend, it will be at the Ritter Building at 7:00 on Wednesday.
I did have one question, uh, was there any discussion on, uh, regarding the Green Communities Task Force becoming a, the Green Committee in regards to the charter?
I don't recall that.
I don't think we, I know the chair had brought it up on several occasions, but I don't think we officially requested any input from town manager or board of selection.
So, please say it one more time, you, you're interested in changing the name?
I believe they were looking for a charge at one point, um, to be added to the charter, I'm not sure if we're in there as the task force, or, please...
Robert Ebersold again, uh, in my role as selectman, that's supposed to come to the selectman, it doesn't need to go through the charter, because we don't charter every single committee.
Okay.
So that one, it'd be as simple to have a communication, the town manager saying, "We request the name change."
Okay, and would we request a charge or some sort of...
Yeah, you should ask for a charge, so you know what you're doing is what you should be doing.
Okay, we just meet tomorrow night, so we'll bring it up at the meeting, thank you. Uh, and going into that, the Charter, Green Communities Task Force meets tomorrow night, um, we received information on some of the building audits that we requested, we're going to be discussing the grant application, because that deadline's coming up for the next round of grant funding, and we're also going to be discussing the streetlight upgrades, so... Uh, I think we're going to pass over number eight.
Sharing just a little bit more about the streetlight upgrades?
So, basically, other towns have upgraded their streetlights to LEDs and, and considerable savings in maintenance. Um, our hurdle is that we cannot use Green Communities Task Force money to buy the streetlights, the town has to appropriate those funds to buy them first, and then we can use the grant funds to upgrade them. Um, I'm not, and I think we're going to discuss the costs and the benefits of that, and if and how we can get that money to procure them, and whether or not it's worth it for the town at the time, but I think Lemonster and Fitchburg have had pretty good success with, uh, upgrading their streetlights, but I will definitely get back to you with the information after the meeting. Um, so number eight, I think we're going to pass over, uh, as in regards to appointing a different AgCom liaison. Uh, directors' items?
So I'm going to turn the first one over to Marjorie.
Okay. As you're aware, when the, when a board makes a decision from a special permit or a site plan approval, the decision has to be prepared for your signature. And there are two ensuing weeks between the board meeting dates, and the decision has to be filed with the town clerk's office within 14 days. So that makes it, uh, as you're aware, for the, the past couple of decisions, you've had to come into the office to sign them so we can meet the filing requirement. What I am proposing is, if you are amenable, that the chair has the authority to sign for and on behalf of the board, so the chair is the only, only individual that has to come into the office to sign the decision.
Is there any drawback from that? Without having, lacking additional signatures?
Not that I'm aware of. If someone disagrees with the decision, then they wouldn't sign anyways, I guess.
Well, Marjorie does a very good job of, of finishing the decisions and sending them out for comment, uh, and if we were to shift to this, I guess we'd be looking for responses from board members that they don't have an issue with the decision, uh, in, in that one person will be signing them. Uh, because if, if you, you know, if, if on day 15, you're like, "Oh, did Greg sign that, because I had this problem with this wording?" It's too late. Uh, so, you know, we've had mixed results of getting enough people to come in and sign decisions, excuse me, in the ensuing two weeks after an approval. And so this sort of puts it all on the chair's shoulders, but it's also one person, and, you know, worst-case scenario, we can seek that person out and have them sign it, as opposed to hunting down three or four or five individuals.
And how do you feel about that, Mr. Chair?
I'm fine, I'm pretty, hopefully, Marjorie can test, I'm pretty consistent with coming in and signing decisions fairly soon, so I have no issue with it, and if you guys have any comments regarding decisions, by all means, forward them to Marjorie or myself at both the same time, and...
Is there something we want to, uh, address with 300?
I was going to say, we could, it also doesn't need to be sorted out immediately.
Sure.
Um, and with the rescission, I, I would prefer that all three of you come to sign it. But, you know, I think having the full board vote on the proposal makes more sense than the three of you, but we wanted to sort of start the conversation.
Have I missed any, Marjorie?
Excuse me?
Did I miss any signatures?
Uh, no, I don't believe you have.
Okay.
I mean, it does make it, I feel it makes it easier for board members, because, I mean, you, you have your, your full-time jobs, and to, to find the time to come by the office and sign, I believe, can be difficult.
Tuesdays and Thursdays helps.
Yeah, standard hours.
So, I'm inclined not to support this, but I would love to hear what Mr. Chenness and Mr. Prog, we have to say.
Yep.
Um, I think that it's, you know, I, first, I, I don't think we've ever talked in our meetings, Marjorie, so it was kind of, this is like a exciting day for all of us, but, um, you know, I, what I, what I worry about on a so, small level is, you know, I have absolute trust in Mr. Bittner, um, you know, but what I'm concerned about is a future board, as I, as always, and if that is something that carries over, if that's something that's limited to for the next six months, for the next year, like, if there's a time limit on this, I'd be concerned about, um, the power, I guess, that that gives one person.
I suppose you could always make it for the, the current chair, and then when the chair changes, or when the board changes, and you could have another discussion.
Yeah.
It's not written in stone.
And this is the way the zoning board... And this is the way the zoning board of appeals does it. Their, their chair signs for the body that the record as, as written is an testament of what they, their decision was. So, no, not that that should influence your decision-making, but it's not an unprecedented step in, in town.
Yeah, I don't think it prohibits anybody from making comments on the decision.
No, no, not at all.
I think it just simplifies it so that we don't run into.
And you do all get the decision to look at ahead of time.
Right.
Well, Mr. Bittner, I support signing for me personally. If something I agree to, I have full confidence in that. So can this, is this something that we can address in two weeks at our next meeting with the full board and then?
Sure. We can put it on the agenda and.
How many, I'm assuming that this should be a unanimous decision?
It's a policy of the board. It could be by majority, but.
Signing the decision should be unanimous, and it hasn't been, so.
I can't imagine that Mr. Chenness is gonna say that he does not, that he wants to come into the office, you know?
Well, it's difficult, I mean, again, as Marjorie said, sometimes it's difficult, I'm not pointing fingers or anything like that.
No, and life happens, and, you know, it's an easy thing to, to forget about, yeah.
So, yeah, we can table it for now and put it on the next agenda.
So I think I'll just pull up the sign bylaw from, from 13 into, into nine so that we can keep this rolling along.
Okay.
We had had the proposal or the request from Tanner Cole back a couple of months ago in regard to adding a sign by right within the commercial district. So it was not a unanimous support, but if I remember correctly, there was a majority support for at least investigating or proposing some language. So I went ahead and did that, and I sent it out to you all on Thursday, and you have it in front of you. I'll first call your attention to E1, which is on the fifth page of, of the sign packet that you have. And that is in regard to, there was a discussion at the same time about home occupations and providing them the ability to put a small, non-illuminated sign in conjunction or in the same manner as those uses by special permit in the residential district. So that's, that's what you find in E1. And then on the next page, under F, I added a fourth provision for signs permitted in non-residential districts, which at this point will just be commercial and Office Park Industrial since the board is proposing to eliminate the retail commercial and fold it into the commercial district. So again, one freestanding sign, not to exceed 12 square feet, with, not to be, have a lower ratio than 1 to 3 on the perpendicular sides. There was some discussion about making sure that the signs weren't super elongated or odd shapes. So the 1 to 3 would mean, you know, it's rectangular at, at mo, at worst, and in a reasonable proportion on the sides. 25 feet is greater than the setback for the site plan signs. That gives a little bit of a buffer from the front property line, 20 feet from the side property lines. And my notes had that the board didn't want them to be lighted without the board approval, so removing the ability to light those signs.
And this would be allowed, just as I'm reading this, without having to come before the board?
Correct. That would be by, by building permit from the building inspector.
So anything in excess of those dimensions?
Yeah, anything, if they wanted to light it, if they wanted it to be 20 feet from the street, if they want it to be greater than 12 square feet, or all of those things would, would kick into section G.
Can we find out if a sign size is a dimensional variation? Because I mean, if they say we want to go in excess of a certain size, would they, it just don't want it to be confusing whether we're the special permit granting, would it be a special permit for that?
Yes.
Whether we're the.
You would not be, because they, the zoning board is, zoning board is special permit granting authority for dimensional variation.
But they would give the dimensional variation, and then we would.
You also get the opportunity.
Choose the actual dimension, or, I just think it makes it confusing and cumbersome, a little bit cumbersome.
You do get the opportunity to comment on, on dimensional variations.
Right. But say they say they want a side bigger than what it is. They'd go to the ZBA. Would the ZBA decide on an actual dimension? Or would they, they just say bigger than that is okay in this instance?
No, they would go in and they would say, you know, it says 12 square feet, we want 85. And the zoning board would say, okay, 85's great.
Okay, and that's.
Or, what are you, crazy?
Can we make it clear to them that they're the ones picking a definitive size then? Because sometimes they just say, yep, bigger is okay, and their decisions are sometimes, well, just in, not in instances of signs, but sometimes they're not specific in their, as specific in their decisions. And I think that's one of the things I wanted to discuss in the chair's meeting, if we ever have it, that just, if they're going, need to be specific, they should be, and that's fine.
Yeah, we can clarify that, and I can, I can talk to Al about that.
I think that the language of, first, Mr. Brown, I think you did a great job summarizing the views of the board. I don't think that I contributed too much to this. So I generally am not gonna support this, but I would like just some clarification on 4A, which is with no less than a 1/3 ratio between the perpendicular sides. I think that this is pretty clear to me, but I wonder, for someone else, if, what is less than 1 to 3? Is that 1 to 2?
2 by 6 is 1 to 3.
No, I understand.
And that's 12 square feet.
What I'm saying is, is like 1 to 2 ratio, is that less? Is 1 to 5 less? Which?
1 to 2 is a greater ratio.
A larger fraction, yeah.
So 1 to 2 would be okay. 1 to 4, 1 to 5 would not be.
All right. So I follow that. I wonder if most people would. I wonder if we, that we should, instead of putting with no less than a 1 to 3 ratio, if there should be a range of ratio. And, and that way, it's between 1 half to 1/3 or 1 to 3? Because I understand, you know, clearly.
Sure.
It's less than 1 to 3 ratio. But I wonder if this is something that could be, well, if this is as clear as it could be.
With no side less than 2 feet. That's.
Yeah. We could, we could say that, I mean, I, I could also talk to the building inspector and see if he thinks it's clear enough. Ultimately, anybody who's proposing anything is going to have to submit, submit a permit application. And it would be easy for him to say, you know, this is good, but your size is off, and you just need to shift the size this way. Hopefully, people don't make the sign before they have the permit in hand. But, you know, sometimes you, you have to learn by your mistakes. If you wanted to say no side to be less than 2 feet, that's fine.
Well, we're assuming that they're gonna make a square or a rectangle.
Correct.
Well, what if they wanted a triangle or an oval?
Well, that's crazy. This is Lunenburg. You can't have, you can't have signs that aren't, don't have parallel sides.
No, circular, obulars, or.
Well, it would be 12 square feet. I mean, you just have to do it different.
You know, some people want to have a cutout.
Mathematical.
That's representative of something they do for their business, right?
Well, then that gets.
Areas for confusion. You know, I think that ratios make, I mean, I, you know, I think, I may have mentioned several times before that I'm pretty good at math, but I think that most people are not. And so, I mean, understanding that, you know, what's smaller than a 1 to 3 ratio, I wonder if, if someone else, maybe math is in their strong suit, or business doesn't require a lot of it. If they're like, well, 1 to 2 is smaller than.
Again, I think in most instances, when a business is putting a sign up, they're not making the sign themselves unless their business assigns.
Yep.
And those folks tend to understand this kind of stuff. And so they're gonna go to Signs R Us or Bob's, you know, Wonder Signs or whatever. And, and those, those, those businesses read sign bylaws all the time. And my experience has always been that if something, if they have a question about something, they pick up the phone and call before they price something out and make a proposal because they want to be correct and they, they want to get that job. You know, again, I'm, I'm happy to, to do something to change it. I just, I also don't want to muddy it up or dumb it down on the instance of, you know, someone, some business owner might not fully understand what it says. And I understand making the bylaws approachable as possible, but also we need to, to get what the town desires out of it.
So, I mean, I think it would be nice if that section was a little clearer. But in general, I don't support this change. I certainly support doing things for small business, but I don't think that it's reasonable for, I think that people should have to come before the planning board for signs.
Yeah, I think, I mean, to Matthew's point, if they have arrow, whatever business, they could have their sign in the shape of an arrow.
Yeah, yeah.
How do you determine, I mean, I would probably want to be more creative than just a square or a rectangle.
Oftentimes, sign bylaws, and ours doesn't necessarily do this, say if you have an irregular outline, whatever rectangular or square shape would encompass the whole thing denotes the square footage of that sign. So, you know, if you had like a weird doodle that was doing some sort of, you know, funky thing, you would draw a rectangle around it, and even if there's negative space that.
Right.
You know, your sign is bigger than it, the reality of it is.
Kind of like your carry-on bag?
Yes, exactly.
As long as it fits in the thing, you're good to go.
And the definitions and use table were formatted and have been sent off to Attorney Costa for review for inclusion in the warrant, including section 8.3.
What was 8.3?
That was the special permit timelines.
Sorry, we're gonna just outline, we are gonna break those up somehow, like.
Yeah, I broke it up into three, so it's section 4.1 through, I think, what ultimately becomes 4.7, which will be the use table, the definitions, and everything through the village district. Then 4.9 doesn't change at all because, or 4.8 doesn't change, that's the floodplain district. And then 4.9 is water supply protection, and there's a few minor changes. That's a standalone article. And then solar, registered marijuana dispensary, and the marijuana moratorium would be the third article.
Okay.
I felt like the use table, the definitions, and the special and accessory uses, or the special conditions and accessory uses all needed to be together because they're really the meat of that package.
Right.
And I'll, I'll send that all around to you, to you guys.
Can you just say that one more time? I missed the third article.
The third article is solar, registered marijuana dispensary, and the current marijuana moratorium. The non-medical adult use moratorium.
All right. We don't want to, we don't want to bring those up, I mean.
Well, we're not changing the solar bylaw. All we're doing is changing the numbering.
Yep.
At this town meeting. We're not changing the moratorium, we're just changing the numbering. And we're making, we're proposing the small changes on the medical, the RMD.
I guess what I, it makes sense to me. I don't, I don't want to be Mr. Conflictual here tonight. But I also understand that, you know, when, when people get the notices, they don't necessarily understand that these things are the same, you know? Instead, it's like we're imposing a moratorium, we're, you know, so that's why I wonder how this is gonna be worded.
What do you mean, what things are the same?
As far as on the article, right, we're not, it's just the numbering. That's what you just said, that we're changing.
Well, and the, the proposed changes in the RMD. So I'll get up and give a presentation, and there'll be a handout sort of running through what, sort of an outline of what the changes are.
Yep. I guess what concerns me is the time between the time that people get the notice in the mail and the time that you actually give the presentation and the habit of misinformation. And what, this, how, how, how is this going to be on the side of someone who's, doesn't really pay attention to our meetings and who just gets this notice in the mail? Are they gonna very clearly understand that we're not adding anything in on these other ones? That we're simply just changing the language of the RMDs?
Because if, I mean, if they choose not to inform themselves, they can come to our meeting on the 26th, or they can listen to the presentation at that meeting. They have two opportunities.
Finance committee reviews.
Or any meeting we've had over the past two years where we've been discussing this, they could have come to, so.
The finance committee reviews the warrant gen, generally. Many times, I'm there to speak to them and answer any questions they would have. I don't think that they have found that our articles have any financial impact ever, but they still, they still go over them. The board of selectmen goes over them, makes their decisions. So even if people don't like to watch us, the selectmen are usually pretty exciting, so people tune in for them. And I'm, again, oftentimes there when they're discussing the planning board's articles and having a, you know, the opportunity to give that same information out there. So there are, there are times between now, the public hearing, and town meeting where there is discussion about the articles and, you know, what the content of them is and how it might be altered from what exists. And then, again, I, you know, I, I try and do my best at town meeting to give as much information in as interesting and short a time period as I can so that the people there will understand what's, what's coming at them.
We have some public comment. I, actually, is this something we can put on the town's Facebook page?
Yeah.
Explanation, that way, I mean, that would be something.
Robert E. Russell, 94 Main Street. I'm going back to my town clerk days now. And part of my pet peeve is articles that legally meet requirements but don't say anything until you get to town meeting. All you need to say is making minor changes to, or changing numbering changes, so you actually say what you're doing. And as opposed to saying, and the language is on file with the town clerk. That really is making people do more than they want to do. As opposed to, we also ran into the issue at last town meeting when we moved the, was it gravel removed with the?
The earth, the, the stormwater.
Stormwater from zoning to general bylaws. People thought we were creating a new bylaw. So that one actually didn't, that gave everything in there, which really was almost too much at that point. We should have said, we are moving this from one section to the other section. And whatever you can do, as, as Mr. Jeffrey said, that when it gets in people's mailbox, they understand what it is and whether I want to pay attention to it or not. And we want to let them know, this one you probably don't because it's just numbering. So if you can do an English-language explanation and then go into the legalese, that would really help the articles. It also helps the selectmen when we try to take a position or not. If we can understand what you're trying to do on the face of the article, and if it's non-controversial, we will probably be more likely to support it sooner than waiting till town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. But we also run into certain issues too, like we did at, I think, last annual town meeting or two, the year before, where when we recodified the bylaw, they've made more substantive changes than we actually had thought were gonna, by changing some of the wording, so. And we actually petitioned to keep some of it in there, so.
That was last year, I think, Constabulary versus.
Right, the districts.
I appreciate the comments, the public comments that were just made. Because I think that that is, it certainly, you know, is my concern. But the other side of this, well, not other side, the other point, I guess, is also that, I mean, I think that there's a pretty strong number in town of people that have a strong opinion about marijuana. And what I guess I'm concerned about is that we're attaching a change in with a moratorium. Now, I know, I fully understand what we're really doing. But I'm trying to, you know, think of the people who, you know, aren't as, like I said, clued into our day-to-day kind of meeting things that we do here. And what I'm concerned about is that we may lose those votes if they're attached. Because there are people who may not support a moratorium under any circumstance at all.
Passed unanimously.
We've already, the moratorium's already in place.
I understand that.
And the other thing is, I mean, that's the whole, not to cut you off, sorry, but for putting out some sort of survey to get the input from the residents. So we're not just making these changes and without support or input from them.
And I understand that. I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to relay is, if the article is, how is this gonna look? Cause I, I, I guess I'm thinking of the stormwater in the last one, that was very lengthy, the whole thing. And even though it was minor changes to it, the whole thing was there. And so, what I'm concerned about is that if we're lumping these together and in here, even though we're not actually doing anything different, that the language is you're asking people to vote for a moratorium. And you're, and you're also asking people to vote for changes to, um, you know, medical marijuana laws. And you may get people who are opposed to voting for a moratorium, who are unwilling to vote for something that, you know, should otherwise have no problem getting through town meeting. You see what I'm saying? Like, it's such, was one of those issues that people feel strongly about. That's why I wonder if, if we should separate the RMD from the other two and have it as a standalone.
Because you feel that's a substantive change?
I do. I do.
Can we seek, do we have time to seek input? I mean, do you, I understand what he's saying, cause...
Oh, I understand what he's saying. I, I, I mean, someone could petition to not make that change and allow the renumbering.
Also don't wanna drag out town meeting, cause we're usually last and then we lose a quorum, and nothing gets passed anyways. So, I mean, it's double-edged sword. We can discuss it with the rest of the board when they're here. I mean, we don't have to make that decision tonight, so, is that acceptable?
It is, but Mr. Allison, what are your thoughts?
Excuse me. Well, um, it is just a re-codification, right? We're not changing anything.
No, you are changing. You're proposing changes to the RMD.
Actually, as it's written now, it does not conform to the newly released draft regulations.
The RMD?
Oh...
Cause that's where the changes are being proposed.
Medical, right, okay. Well, no, actually, it does not concur with the revised 40, 48, Section 3, the exemption, the ag exemption. I think that's why we're changing...
Yeah, well, I think that the way it's written creates a different interpretation of it than maybe was originally intended. So, it's saying, and I think that that, well, I, I mean, I think that, that the, the change is, is substantive. I mean, it could, it could exist as it exists now and still be enforced in a reasonable way. And I think the proposal to bring cultivation indoors by special permit only in residential districts still is only allowing it on parcels that are 48, Section 3 eligible.
Where it's allowed isn't gonna change. The only thing that changes with this is...
Is the manner of which it's allowed.
Yeah, exactly. So, whatever properties are eligible today will still remain eligible. Um, they just have to do it indoors. And is that substantial enough that someone may have a strong enough opinion that may be different than whether or not they agree with the code of codification of some other stuff? Do we want to hold up codification because of a strong opinion on something? And also, do we wanna prevent this thing from passing because of the codification of a moratorium on marijuana?
I mean, even if it doesn't pass, the bylaw still exists, and it's still in there. We just have a really wonky numbering system. You know, so we would have 250, 4, 1 through 4, 9 or 10 or 11, and then we would have 16, 17, and 18. Or 15, 17, or 15, I think it would be 15, 16, and 18. So, it wouldn't, it wouldn't harm anything, it would just feel awkward.
You've already added a bunch of numbers.
We're actually trimming the numbers now.
Right. So, yeah.
I understand what Michael Ray's saying. Um, again, I think it's something that we should discuss with the other two members and then make the decision.
Well, also, I think, I think that if it does become a contentious issue, it could be amended on the floor, right?
And I guess I understand what you're saying. I, I don't want to overburden the warrant with too many articles where a failure of this article wouldn't harm the town in any way. It would just mean, it, you'd look it up on the website and you'd be like, that's really weird. Why isn't there anything between 12 and 15? And then why is there no 17? But it, it wouldn't, the, the law wouldn't change, it would just be goofy looking.
Now, you wouldn't need to have town approval to put 14, 15, 16 intentionally left blank, right? Could, would you?
No, I, I mean, I...
So, then that would...
Just the space holders?
Yeah, yeah. I don't, I don't believe so.
I'm comfortable with whatever you're comfortable with, Mr. Chair.
I, we don't have to decide tonight, correct?
No.
All right, yeah, I'd just rather wait till we can table it till the other...
I mean, I, I sent them over so that, that Elaine could start processing them, but if we chop them up or pull them apart, I mean, we have until the 22nd to have formally...
Is that something, an opinion we can solicit from the members outside of the meeting, or...
Yeah, I mean, we still have until, I mean, we meet on the 19th, so it's prior to...
Can you just send everybody an email asking their opinion?
Sure, and I'll, I'll send the articles along.
Just say, this is what I propose and...
Yep.
Michael, or there is an opinion that we may wanna separate some of them? All right. All right, notices and communications.
They've all been scanned off to you.
Uh, our meeting schedule, all board meetings are held at Town Hall, 6:30 PM unless otherwise indicated. There will be no meeting on March 12th, um, due to the town caucus, and then we'll meet on the 19th and the 26th. And our public hearing for warrant articles will be March 26th. Is there any public comment from the board? Is there any public comment from the public? All right, um, I think we've covered most of the ongoing items. Um, the economic development, isn't there a follow-up?
There was a meeting this morning with the, with the businesses. And it was, it was a rehash of the presentation, uh, that was given to the Board of Selectmen in December, uh, of the outcome and results of MRPC study. Uh, the town managers also applied for DLTA for a business brochure and a permitting guidebook. Uh, so, the expectation is the permitting guidebook will be approved pretty easily, and they're confident about the brochure, but it's something they haven't done in, in recent years, so they have to wait and see what the Commonwealth says.
All right, thank you. Um, any board comments or concerns? Anything on the student initiative?
Yeah, so, I did get the chance this past week to speak with, um, the assessor's office and also with the town clerk to add to, um, more boards that need support, uh, that would benefit from student volunteers. And I did, I did also meet with, um, Loxy, the superintendent, to kinda get an update on where we're at with this, and then also to kinda outline where our timelines are for the rest of the year. So, I will, uh, be looking to coordinate a meeting with the, uh, point of contact at the high school, um, within the next, I think, three weeks is when we're supposed to be meeting, in like the middle of March. So, hopefully, uh, last meeting in March, should have a little bit more information about where we're at. But the goal is to try to, um, implement this going into next year, so they're having all the information into their hands, um, by the end of the school year or so. So, that way, the seniors can volunteer to do some good stuff in town for some board and committees, and, uh, some of the town employees as well.
Thanks. Great.
Thank you.
All right, I guess that's it. I'd accept the motion.
I move the adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Don't leave. Sign your eyes away.
Shall I date this?
Sure. You are a new liaison, Bob?
26th.
You are a new liaison, or just a lazy Monday night?
No, it makes me feel important.